Thank you for joining us this evening. Regular scheduled council meeting in the Park City City Council, July 11th, 2017, at 7:00 PM. Daniella, for the last time in this building that has served us well, would you call the roll?
John Linder. George Glover.
Here.
Gary Aldrich.
Here.
Melvin Kerr.
Here.
Tom Jones.
Here.
George Capps.
Here.
Joel Pumphrey.
Here.
Jim Schrader.
Here.
The quorum is present, Your Honor.
Thank you. Tonight Pastor Bill Coons is going to lead in the invocation and Councilman Joel Pumphrey is going to lead in the pledge. If everybody please stand.
Boy, isn't it a nice sunshiny day outside. And it helps to have your air conditioner working good. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening. Father, I lift the Park City City Council before you. And Father, I ask that you give them wisdom as they deal with the various issues of the community and we realize they, there's no way they can please everybody, but we ask that you give them wisdom, that they will do the very best for the community as a whole. Father, may they value freedom over power, that the very best for Park City will be done. Bless each council member, Father, in their, in their council lives, in their daily lives, their work lives, their home lives. I ask your blessings. Be with the employees of Park City. Bless them. Father, we thank you for all that they do. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. The first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion? George?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
And Jim? May I second that? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes eight zero, or seven zero, sorry. We don't have anything for awards and presentations? We have Richard Finney here to speak. Go ahead and come on up.
He's on the zoning. He has a thing on-
Well, he signed up on public forum, so, okay. So you didn't have anything for public forum, did you? Okay, you can go ahead now.
I needed to sign in.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we don't have anybody signed up for public forum, so we'll move on to staff reports and we'll start with our city administrator, Jack Whitson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We finally think we have one, another lot in Bear Hill signed. It's been sold two or three times, but this time I think is a good lock. And we've signed an agreement for the rest of the undeveloped lots and hopefully that will happen within the next week, we hope. And four other lots in Bear Hill at the same time. So we'll be turning that over to probably the HOA here shortly.
Yes.
Let everybody in the public know, I think most of you already know, we'll be closed Thursday and Friday and Monday of next week. We'll be moving from this facility to a new facility. And we'll be open for general business Tuesday. So, that's the only thing else unless you guys have something else, Mr. Mayor?
No, I don't. Does he have something, Tom?
Yeah, it's, I don't know if it's the appropriate time. I don't know if Jack was going to bring it up, but a former city administrator passed away this past weekend, Lee Parker. For those that may not have known, his funeral's Thursday, so, you know, Jack better acquainted with him than I was, so.
I just found out today.
Okay. All right, thanks, Tom. I didn't know about that either. I'm sorry. All right. We'll move on to Rick Norman, our Director of Public Works. Rick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Works report for this evening, July 11th, 2017. First of all, in our park department, prior to July 4th, we spent a lot of time mowing and trimming in the parks and facilities. Tried to get that as good as we could for the holiday weekend. We did grade and seed the berm on the south side of the new administration center. Anyone's been up at the community building and made the front of that may look a little different, a little bare. We had to remove that large tree in front of that. The, it was diseased and we were concerned it was going to fall on the building, so we did get that removed. The street department, they also done extra mowing and trimming for the Fourth of July weekend. As part of that, we did get the sweeper out and swept the parade route for the parade. We did have two locations in Bear Hill that we had some volunteers' trees coming up at the end of Two Streets. We did get those taken down and we've also sprayed those, so hopefully they won't be coming back. In the water and sewer department, the average work orders per day for June was thirty. Any questions?
Does anybody have any questions for Rick? Not seeing any. Thank you, Rick. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Jim?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
And Gary? Second. Okay, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes seven zero. I now call Agenda Item 8A, which is Case Number Z-2017-02. This is for rezoning amendment, requesting a change on Parcel 1 from the present C2 Service Business District to R2 Single Family Residential District, and on Parcel 2 from the present C2 Service Business District to the L1 Light Industrial District. Before we proceed, I'll ask any of the council members if any of them intend to disqualify themselves from discussing and voting on this case because they have conflicts or interest or a particular bias in this matter. Has the city clerk received any protest or petitions on the case?
None.
Okay. I now ask the council members if they have received all copies of the unapproved minutes from the planning commission for June 19th, 2017, which summarizes the hearing on the case. Yes?
Yes.
Okay. After the zoning administrators' report, I'll ask the applicant in the public who may wish to speak at this item. Now call on the zoning administrator, Jack Whitson, to provide us with a brief background on the report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Up on the screen in red are the two lots of this case. The north, Father, North Lot is going from C2 to residential. And the South Lot, and they're about equal, the South Lot is going from C2 to light industrial. Currently, this is the zoning map. The yellow is residential, the purple is light industrial, and of course, the red is We did not have anybody speak against this zoning at our hearing at all. Mr. Finney can talk to you about what his goals are with these two lots. But other than that, they unanimously approved it to recommend to you the seventeen factors, seventeen factors, and to go ahead and rezone both lots. The planning commission has, so.
Thank you. Does the applicant wish to present any new information?
I have all this time.
Okay. Are there any questions to the applicant from the council? Assuming that the, that the council has received all information they need on this case, I will outline the choices provided under the state statutes for council action. One, by a majority vote, move to adopt the finding of factors and recommendation of the planning commission on this case, Z-2017-02, and approve the ordinance. Two, by a two-thirds majority vote, move to override the planning commission's recommendation, describe in detail the findings and factors supporting the motion, and attach the appropriate conditions, if any, and approve the ordinance. Or three, by a majority vote, return the recommendation to the planning commission for further consideration at its next regular meeting, and with a statement specifying the basis for the council's failure to approve or disapprove the recommendation. Does the council understand? So now the council, does somebody have a motion or a recommendation at this point? Gary?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the seventeen factor, findings of fact, and approve the ordinance, Case Number Z-2017-02.
Okay. Jim?
I'm going to second that.
Okay. Tom, you had a discussion?
I was going to second it.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. Daniella, would you call the roll?
John Linder. George Glover.
Aye.
Gary Aldrich.
Aye.
Melvin Kerr.
Aye.
Tom Jones.
Aye.
George Capps.
Aye.
Joel Pumphrey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye.
And that ordinance passes?
That is Ordinance 1029-2017.
Okay, thank you. I now call Item 8B, which is consider scheduling of a special meeting for the 2008 Budget Workshop on July 18th, 2017, at 6:00 PM in the training room at the Administration Center at 1941 East 61st Street North. So we had talked about getting together a workshop and wanted to try a little bit earlier. Hopefully six o'clock would be good with everybody and we could try to kind of dive in and get a good look at the budget and see if we want to make any changes so that following council meeting, we would be able to approve the budget. So this would be our time to get together, walk through it, and look it over. So if everybody agrees with this time, if somebody'd make a motion, that would be our night of our budget workshop. Jim?
The timing works great with me on my schedule, so I'd be in favor of that. So I would make a motion, we set the meeting, the special meeting for the 2018 Budget Workshop for July 18th at 6:00 PM.
Okay. George?
I'll second that.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes seven zero. And I'm going to pass this around if everybody just signed that for that special meeting notice that we already have that. The next item on the agenda is Item C, which is consider an ordinance creating sections 14-0-109 of the New Municipal Code of the City of Park City, Kansas, amending sections 182 dot one of the standard traffic ordinance for Kansas cities relating to seat belts.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. They've asked me to speak upon this. Basically, what has happened is the Kansas Legislature has decided that they want to make, take a more proactive approach to encouraging people to use their seat belts, and they have established in the last legislative session by means of House Bill Number 2076, a seat belt education fund that would be used to fund programs across the state, letting people know about the seat belt laws and the reasons for using them. In order to fund this, they have passed a law stating that the fines for seat belts will increase from $10 to $30, and that $20 of that $30 which is collected for each seat belt fine will be sent to the state to fund this. They've also added a section in this House bill that says that this law will be uniform across the state, that no county or municipality can, can change it. And because we have an ordinance on the books that says that the seat belt fine is only $10, we have to change it, and so that's what this ordinance is about.
Would it be correct now that we're collecting less than what's being asked and we're actually paying that, paying that back to the state too, at the higher rate, or no?
Well, no, 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 no. The seat belt fine right now is $10.
Right.
They have raised it to $30, but that extra $20 is for the state. In other words, the state is raising that fine and they're saying we have to send that to them to fund this.
Right. So we're currently collecting 10 and paying out 30?
No, we're not paying out anything right now.
Okay. Okay.
That's, that's the whole idea behind the ordinance, is so that we come in line with the state law and begin to do that.
Okay.
And we have already with the city clerk, we've made arrangements to be able to do that once the ordinance is passed.
Okay. Thank you. Tom?
This is a state mandate. We don't have any choice. They're helping us out again, so I'll make a motion, we approve this.
Joel?
I'll second.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second. Daniella, would you call the roll?
John Linder. George Glover.
Aye.
Gary Aldrich.
Aye.
Melvin Kerr.
Aye.
Tom Jones.
Aye.
George Capps.
Aye.
Joel Pumphrey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye.
And that passes seven zero?
That is Ordinance 1028-2017.
Okay, that brings us to Item D, which is consider replacement of an irrigation system for Lakewood Heights addition on 53rd Street North, east of hydraulic, as previously agreed upon, as a condition of the right-of-way easement acquisition. Work to be performed by Apex Irrigation at a cost of $7,200 from the Special Street and Highway Fund. Jack, did you want to-
Yes.
-remind us about what we did here?
Yes, in order not to get into any legal battles with some of these owners of property, they had irrigation systems that they had just put in, this one particularly, had just installed, and then a project came in and tore it out, or was going to tear it out. And we had to get a couple of, several easements from him, and he wasn't willing to do that unless we guaranteed that we would put his, his irrigation system back. I brought that to the council. Gary made a motion to, for up to 3,000, there was two of them, Buckley and this one. This is Lakewood Heights. Buckley decided they don't want it replaced. Gary had made a motion of $3,000, not to exceed $3,000 in each location, for a total of $6,000. Well, it's above that, so we have to bring it back to you. And so it was an agreement we made with the owner to get the easements.
Okay. Gary?
I'll make a motion that we approve the additional cost and Apex Irrigation for 7,200 from Special Street and Highway Fund.
Okay. Tom?
I'm going to second that for discussion.
Okay.
What are we getting for 7,200? I mean, that's a lot of irrigation.
Well, there's a 10-foot hike and bike path-
Right.
...splitting the right-of-way.
Okay.
You have to put sprink, the, Rick could probably explain it better. I'll let Rick, Rick talk to them and he can tell you. It's over 1,200 foot of line, and I don't know, God, how many sprinklers that it takes-
It was already existing, wasn't it?
Yes, it was.
And we tore it all out?
Yes.
Yeah, when we widened that street.
Jack had directed us- 53rd Street right-of-way, we-
Well, I understand that, but I didn't know we removed it all. I just thought we were going to go in and fix it.
No, it's gone. The contractor went in and just wiped it completely.
Okay.
Yeah, they had to remove most of it. Jack had directed us to stay coordinated with the irrigation contractor and the general contractor. We did that all along the way. Where possible, we would get Cornejo and Apex together and we would remove and hold back parts where we could. I don't know what the square footage of this length of run is, but I think it's over 1,600 feet. It's a large area. They worked with us on that. We do have a cost savings here of, we saved all the wiring on that, the control box, which-
Okay.
I don't know if it's exactly 15, I think it's anywhere from 1,200 to 1,500. We did save that. They did, they've already got the lines run to the island because there was plants, plantings there that-
Right.
-they wanted to save. So there is a cost saving on this and it's a substantial area.
Okay. Okay, good, Tom.
Not good, but I understand now.
Yeah. Melvin?
I, did I just miss, we only have the one bid on this?
The, that was another situation. The owner wanted the same company that put it in the first time to do it the second time.
Okay.
And if we didn't, then we wouldn't have had the knowledge of where certain things were and stuff, that we could have saved another, I don't know how many dollars that we saved by working with the same company.
We probably saved, and I'm just estimating, $2,000 to $3,000. We had to decide this probably a year ago to start saving these. The guy come out, he would put heads back, put the controllers back, put everything back that we could to save cost on this. If we would have had to do this starting fresh, it would have had to been redesigned and completely reworked, whereas this guy already had some of the parts and the wiring and the controllers and, and that. We did get to save those costs on.
Okay. Have we got a second?
Yes.
Okay. I'm good.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes seven zero. The next item on the agenda is Item E, which is consider bids for janitorial services for city facilities. Daniella?
Mayor and council, in your packets, you have a bid tab, which is on the last page, from four different cleaning companies. It's been six years since we've gone out for bid in with the construction of our new city administration center. We took the opportunity to get quotes on the cleaning of this new building and our other three buildings. Currently, as you can see on the janitorial service options tab, our current provider in the cleaning of our four buildings is about $15,000 per year. Staff decided, made the recommendation that due to the size of the building, we requested a bid for the cleaning of the building twice a week. Our senior center also has been needing cleaning more than once a week, so we requested a cleaning of the senior center building twice a week. So this includes the city administration center and our senior center be cleaned two times a week, and our public works building and our community building cleaned one time a week, which is currently how it's set up. We received bids from four different companies, and the lowest bid was from TFM at a cost of $26,429 a year. We received great references. They currently clean the Dillons and the Quick Shops in town, so staff recommends you accept their bid for janitorial services for all city facilities.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Daniella? Okay, Tom?
I do have one. There's a need to clean that whole building twice a week, and we've got a lot of space in there that's empty. I, I just wondered, are we going to be cleaning all of it twice a week?
Ye, yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
And I, and the current building needs cleaned twice a week that we're in.
Well, I understand, but I mean, I'm, it doesn't make any sense to pay to clean something that nobody's in.
There's only three offices that nobody's in.
And those are-
I think during the bidding process-
Okay.
-they knew which offices-
That was part of it. Okay.
Yeah, we did walkthroughs.
We did walkthroughs.
Yeah.
Okay.
So there are spaces that are not included in the bid, for example, police department spaces that won't be cleaned, and that there's three or four offices that won't be cleaned on a continual basis, but the sweeping, the mopping, the bathrooms, all that will be twice a week.
We couldn't read that with what we have here.
Sorry about that.
Okay.
Gotcha.
George?
I'm curious, just, just, Chair Ossie, these, these cleaning services, they come in there when city staff's not there?
I'm sorry, what did you say?
They come in and clean the building while staff is not there?
Yes, sir.
What, what have you done to check their security of this company?
They go through an extensive background check and get fingerprinted.
All of them?
Yes, everyone does. And the same person that, well, we haven't yet. When we rec, if you accept and file today, we will then go through the fingerprinting, background check, and those same individuals that clean week will have to clean every week.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Melvin?
Where does the funds come from on this? Is that out of the general fund, or?
The bill is split between the departments, so general fund and the, the water fund for the public works building.
Well, I make a motion, we approve $26,429 for the lowest bid to, I forget the name of it.
TFM. TFM.
TFM.
Thank you.
Okay, George?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes seven zero. The next item on the agenda is Item F, which is consider agreement with Sandifer Engineering Controls to provide security monitoring for the new administration center. Chief?
Mr. Mayor, council members, the new building alarm monitoring service is currently provided by Central Security Group. The price that we pay for that right now is $34.40 a month. Sandifer Engineering and Controls is the company from Wichita that put in the alarm system and all the cameras and so forth in the current building. They work with a third-party company by the name of Alarms Central. They don't really push it, but they offer it to their customers, and it's widely used by a lot of commercial customers. The price that they charge is $21.50. If we go with them, in addition to the price being substantially less, Sandifer will also pay for the first year of monitoring for free. I think they do that to kind of help carry people who are on a contract, but we're not on a, we're on a month-to-month right now, so we could cancel with just 30 days' notice. This would start on the, the billing would start on the 13th of the month, and it's also a month-to-month agreement, so it could be canceled at any time, and I'd be glad to answer any questions if you, if you have any.
Anybody have any questions for Chief? Jim?
Only if you could renegotiate my contract too, because that's really cheap. That's a great price.
Jim?
So I would move that we approve the agreement with Sandifer Engineering- So I would move that we approve the agreement with Sandifer Engineering Controls to provide monitoring, provide security monitoring for the new administrative, administration center per the recommended action.
Okay. Sir? George?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes seven zero. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? That was for the alarm system. How about the FAR system? That's a separate, separate deal.
Well, we don't have that on the agenda. The only thing that's on the agenda is.
It was in the packet, so.
Okay.
There, it's my understanding there is no fire alarm.
Right.
There's one in here for services for FAR alarm. Doing $58 for the rest of 2017.
Yes, Jack, I appreciate you bringing that up because I, that reminds me, I forgot to mention. If you look at the, the front page there where it says pricing, Sandifer, and it says pricing at the top, it even says starting January 2017. So the date on this is not correct. And this is what was sent, you can see the date there, June 10th. This was sent to me just yesterday by Sandifer. So it's in need of some correction before it gets signed. And so I apologize for not bringing to you corrected. Agreement.
All right. Thanks, Chief. All right, next is just governing body reports. I just want to start off to, once again, staff has done a phenomenal job. And we've been working diligently over the last several weeks planning the move starting to take place this Thursday. So Thursday, Friday, hopefully Friday, we'll be in a position we'll be able to test some of our IT stuff, make sure everything's working fine and functioning the way we want it. We've got movers in place, so it's going to be a busy day on Thursday and Friday trying to get relocated. We'll see how much on Monday that we have to use and that. Once again, thank you all. Done a fine job. Every one of your department heads that I've been working with, outstanding. Jim?
Nothing to add tonight.
Joel?
I guess I just want to thank all the volunteers for Salute to Freedom. It was really good this year.
George?
All I'd say is I thought the holidays went real good, except, you know, all the fireworks really got the dogs upset. A lot of dogs got less. I, for one, got bit. And, you know, it's just the price we pay, I guess.
Tom?
I got one just now settled down. So I don't have anything.
Melvin?
Well, I can just say that Park City was a place to be for entertainment between the fireworks and the racing and baseball. BMX track was going and.
This last week, the park was a happen and place.
Oh, it was, so.
It was.
I don't have anything to say for you.
George?
Yeah, I just want to piggyback on that. I thought the July 4th thing, everything went really well. I was be, able to be part of the Pet Judge contest for the, and they had so many different things about wagging tail dog and best sit-up dog that sits up and then there's best trick stock. So I'd never been part of that, so it was good to be part of that and just to see the many animals that came out. I want to thank the people that participated in that. Thank you.
Thank you. Oops. Does anybody want to make a motion to? Melman?
I'll make a motion with one more comment there. I think I was the most popular councilman out there. I was handing out ice creams, so.
Tom?
But it was melded.
Right, right, right. No, please.
I'd like to have the other council members that are running for reelection.
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go.
Should have my name on them.
Jim? And I would second that. Okay. The adjournment part. Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you.